I'd like to call for the order of the January 6, 2015 City of Statesboro City Council Meeting. I would ask Councilman Will Bridge, please lead us in our invocation and Pledge of Allegiance.
Absolutely. Happy New Year. I tried my best to find, there's a prayer that President Ford did. So if y'all are, you know, President Ford people, which is probably not a lot of President Ford people, but there's a President, he did his prayers. So I'm still looking for it. If I can find it, please do. Google it now. So, please value it. Dear Lord, thank you very much for this opportunity we have to be here for this new year. Thank you for previous year. Please be with us as we make the decisions that we do here on council. Please allow us to work together. And please grant us the wisdom to make the right decisions. And please give us humility and all the necessary things that we need to be public servants. We do this with your name, and we do appreciate the opportunity to be here and serve our community. Amen. You'll stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America, and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're gonna begin our meeting today on the agenda of free with recognitions and public presentations. Although I do have to point out one thing, that tomorrow is January the 7th. And I was actually sworn in last year on January the 7th. It was the coldest day of the year. Tomorrow, January 7th, will again be the coldest day of the year. And the low is 21, the high is 36. So I don't know what that means, but I got tickled when I looked at that this morning. So I don't know, maybe it's a trend. I'm gonna start by asking Jeff Grant to please come forward and introduce our two recognitions today.
Our first recognition, well, good morning, Mayor and Council. Jeffrey Grant, Terry County Public Resources. First recognition is retired Larry Kirkland. He's been with the Police Department for about 34 years of service. I've been here four years. I've known Larry for the other 30, but it is a bit of a pleasure to have Larry work at the City of Statesboro. The Police Department has a pleasure of commemorating him. The past Friday, we had the Police Department gave his duty gun at that ceremony. And today, we just want to recognize Larry. Thirty-four years is a long time. I think the last person who was longer than that might have been Chris Mose. Thirty-four years is a long time.
That old young man, seriously.
I am 34 years.
That's really good. That's really good. After that presentation, we'll do a presentation. But without further ado, Mr. Larry Kirkland.
Thank you very much. Smile, Larry.
Wow, it ain't okay.
Is retirement that nice?
Yes.
As many of you guys know, every year we do the annual holiday celebration in Run Number 05K. This year was the third annual Run Number 05K. Holiday event, there's over 5,000 attendees. Before I even go further, let me say Alan Mulder. Who's Alan?
There's Alan.
Yes, Alan, Director of DSDA. They've been doing this program for many years, so we just could piggyback in his success. So Alan and Elena are really the ones that made this program a significant success. It is the largest event hosted downtown Statesboro. We had over 150 runners participate, and we raised over $8,000 on behalf of United Way. I also want to recognize some of our planning team. Obviously, it's Flady Blair, she's not here, so I'm gonna carry her. She was over awards and shirts. Rebecca Pollock from George Southern, she was over public relations, as well as Caleb Griffin. Cindy Dietz, who was over registration. Alan Mulder and Elena, who were over the holiday celebration. Heidi and Becky with the Statesboro Convention Visitors Bureau. Bob, Mandy, and Kerry Melton of United Way. Petey, Chuck Forney and his crew, couldn't do it without them. As well as Public Works, Robert Siemens and his crew. George Southern Athletics, Dan Adams, Director of Marketing, helped out with that event. Suzanne Tatum, who was very instrumental with government affairs and community civic engagement with George Southern. She was on that team, as well as Aider Center for the Arts, who helped out with that project. Sponsors were Glenn Davis Associates, Hussey Gay, Bell &amp; Young, Statesboro Properties, Transform Health Arts, South Georgia Medicaid Care, Subway, Shane's Ritz Shack, Taylor Benefit Resource, the Hampton's Apartment, Citizens Bank, East Georgia Regional Hospital, Shaw Hankins, Industry Buying Group, South Georgia Cancer Care, Barefoot Athletics, and George Southern Happy Athletics. This was definitely a, a lot of times to bring all of these groups together, to put this event together says a lot about our community and what it can do together. We all put our agendas aside and came together, we went on a common vote, and it was a success for Not Just Street, Not Just Way, but for those who are less fortunate. And definitely without the support of City Manager, Barbara Keshaire, as well as the Mayor, Mayor Jay Moore. It's gonna be possible. So Mayor Jay Moore's gonna share a few words, and then we're gonna present a check to the United Way.
I'll just be honest, I didn't run. I used to, and then I got this other job. And it's kind of impeded that a little bit, but I do wanna thank everybody who contributed to this event. I think it's a wonderful testament that the City of Statesboro can contribute $800 to the United Way. It's a wonderful organization that does a lot, probably 130 or something organizations that you all support?
Seventeen, ninety.
Seventeen? Okay, that is, locally. And so we appreciate that very, very much. And I'm just very happy and pleased and proud to be able to have an event that contributes $800 or more tax. So if y'all wouldn't mind coming forward and accept this, is it a big check that I have?
It's a big check. There's gonna be a smaller check that...
He gets dry cash, what the hell?
I'll start by saying I didn't run either.
But you showed up and run in clothes.
I did fool a lot of people.
I wonder why you showed up and run in clothes and didn't run.
We just thank the City of Statesboro for the support and the partnership, and look forward to strengthening that in the board.
Very good. There is no city of states.
We have a body to lead this.
How much did we should be allowed to remain?
Well, I'll say this, over the last three years, the city's raised over $18,000 towards charities, for our community. Last year, $5,000, and year, $45,000.
Thank you very much. Pursuant, we have anybody that has asked to make a public comment? Okay, moving to Agenda Item 5. I would like to ask council to review the minutes listed under A and B, and then ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda, please.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Agenda Item 6, administrative hearings for alcohol violations. I wanna ask Rob real quick, has everybody had a chance who's listed on this agenda for a violation to meet with Rob, Rob, and the City of Statesboro Police Department? Are we? Let me find out where we are with that real quick.
Chair, I think you still need some of the...
Have you completed that process, Frank Bryan? Or you need some more time?
All the ones we're not sure were there. We should have four, we need to go.
Okay. In that case, we will move to Agenda Item 6, which is administrative hearings for alleged alcohol violations as pursued in Chapter 6 of the City of Statesboro Alcohol Ordinance. We're gonna consider persons or entities that hold an alcohol beverage license issued by the city, whether they have violated Chapter 6 of the Code Ordinance of the City of Statesboro regarding alcoholic beverages, and if so, what sanctions are appropriate under the ordinance. These cases are being brought by the Department of Public Safety against several license holders, to be specific. Before we proceed those cases, I would like to establish the general procedures. These cases will follow, when sitting as a quasi-judicial body, the mayor and city council are not sitting as a court of the state, as defined in OCGA 24-1-2. As such, strict compliance with the Georgia Rules of Evidence as provided for in Chapter 24 of the Official Code of Georgia is not required. Rulings on the relevancy and misability of evidence and whether to hear argument in all other points of order, including who shall address counsel, shall be made by the presiding officer pursuant to the authority granted to the presiding officer in Section 2-2 of the Code of Ordinance of the City of Statesboro in light of the purpose and scope of this hearing. The standard of proof for determining whether violations have taken place is a preponderance of the evidence. In determining whether the preponderance of evidence lies, council may consider all the facts and circumstances of the case. The witnesses matter of testifying, their intelligence, their means, and opportunity for knowing the facts to which they testified, the nature of the facts to which they testified, the probability or improbability of their testimony, their interest or won't of interest and their personal credibility, so far as the same may legitimately appear from the hearing. In arriving at a decision, the council from the facts proved or from the absence of counter evidence to the facts proved, may infer the existence of other facts reasonably and logically consequent to those proved. In other words, the council can make reasonable imferences from the facts presented here today in determining whether violations occur, and the number of violations that do occur. Moral and reasonable certainty is all that can be expected in a legal investigation. Both the Department of Public Safety and the litency have the right to be represented by council, the right to present evidence and cross-examine the evidence presented by the opposing party. Finally, both the Department of Public Safety and the litency enjoy the right to appeal any decision here today to the superior court of bill, cannot be of petition or superior... Okay, we got that. Now, moving along. Can I please have anybody who will be speaking or giving evidence regarding these administrative hearings to please stand? If you're coming forward, you need to stand. I know we got more than that. Okay, if you're coming to the podium and you spoke with Mr. Bryan, you need to stand. Okay? Is that everybody, Lieutenant Bryan? Okay, just remind me to swear while we come in, okay? Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that testimony you give here today shall be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay. We will start, tell me who on that list Mr. Bryan is being met with now?
Current ones is Sunny Food Mart, which is number two, and Jared Locke is your representative. Flash Foods, number 251.
Okay, can we have the folks from Flash Foods, number 251, please come forward? Good morning. Please state your name for the record and who you are representing today.
Jared Locke, Flash Foods, number 251.
Okay, and you have been duly sworn, yes or no?
Yes.
Have you reached an agreement with the City of Statesboro Department of Public Safety regarding this charge? Okay, did we have the paper that is signed?
Yes, ma'am, we do. Motion to adjourn, if you please sign by Mr. Locke, hands up.
Okay, can you bring that forward, please?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Locke, did you sign this paper that I'm holding in my hand stipulating that the entity you represent did indeed violate the City of Statesboro Alcohol Ordinance? Okay, do you have anything that you would like to say to council at this time regarding this violation?
Yes, we do everything physically possible at Flash Foods, restricted vendors from acting. Our system's pretty much full for, if they follow the parent's secrets. When we scan any H restricted item, it says, please check that ID, and they have to physically enter a birthday. We talk about this weekly, daily, at all of our meetings, they're talked about when they're hired, and we have a zero tolerance. Anybody that has not followed a violation at our stores are terminated on the spot. So this employee was terminated on December 3rd, thank you.
Okay, does council have any questions for Mr. Locke?
The charge, the offender...
Yes, the offender was issued a citation on that page, other than the independent in...
Okay, any other questions from council?
Is the case pending currently out because of them? Has it cycled through, or is there a...
Travel on two different tracks. They seem really unrelated, believe me. It probably takes a little longer to get through than just before, about an hour, eight minutes, two, three months. A couple of months after the citation's issued, and then a couple of months of citation.
Any further questions? Okay, do I have a motion from council finding that Flash Foods, number 251, located at 12440 Highway 300 South, violated the City of Statesboro Alcohol Ordinance on December 3rd, 2014?
No movement.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye. Opposed? As this is the first violation, council may consider a one-day suspension of the offender's alcohol license or warning as stipulated by the ordinance. Do I have a motion from council as regards punishment for the violation?
We can rule that the first offense be a warning, hence we didn't pay it.
Okay, do I have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Okay, are we ready to move to violation 3? You wanna go to violation 2?
No, we go to violation 2.
Okay. Sunny Food Mart? Okay, please state your name for the record, who you are representing today, please, sir. Okay, and you are representing Sunny Food Mart. Okay, at 725 South Main Street. Have you reached an agreement with the City of Statesboro Department of Public Safety regarding this charge? Okay, do I, do you have that agreement?
Yes, ma'am, it was signed by Mr. Allen.
Okay. Did you sign this paper that I'm holding in my hand stipulating that the entity you represent did indeed violate the City of Statesboro Alcohol Ordinance? Okay. Do you have anything that you would like to say to council at this time regarding this violation?
General report by Sunny Food Mart, Sunny Food Mart was not standing on the...
Okay, that's right, they were outside. All right, let's go back and do that. If you can please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you give here today shall be the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Okay. Do you have been duly sworn, yes or no? Yes. Okay, lower your hand, that's fine. We'll go back. Did you, have you reached an agreement with the City of Statesboro Department of Public Safety regarding this charge? Okay. Did you sign the paper that I'm holding in my hand stipulating that the entity you represent did indeed violate the City of Statesboro Alcohol Ordinance? Okay. Do you have anything that you would like to say to council at this time regarding this violation? Okay, does council have any questions for Mr. Patel regarding this violation?
Do you have similar city cards in place on your registers? Does someone come buy alcohol, they have to put in?
We're also trying to provide, which requires that police...
And you have some sort of training program for all of your new hires to spot underage drinkers or underage?
Do we have any other questions for Mr. Patel?
The seller was also charged?
In all cases.
Do I have a motion from council finding that Sunny Food Mart, located at 725 South Main Street, violated the City of Statesboro Alcohol Ordinance on December 3rd, 2014?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? As this is a first violation, council may consider a one-day suspension of the offender's alcohol license or warning as stipulated by the ordinance. Do I have a motion from council as it regards punishment for the violation?
We refer to it being a warning, then...
Do I have a second?
Another second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Do I have a representative from Tobacco &amp; More? I think the more is what got him drunk. I'm sorry, it was just... Okay. Please state your name for the record and who you are representing today.
I'm...
Okay. Okay. You have been duly sworn, yes or no? Okay. Excuse me, have you reached an agreement with the City of Statesboro Department of Public Safety regarding this charge? Okay, do you have that agreement with you, Lieutenant Bryan?
Thank you.
Did you sign this paper that I'm holding in my hand stipulating that the entity you represent did indeed violate the City of Statesboro Alcohol Ordinance? Okay. Do you have anything that you would like to say to council at this time regarding this violation?
I think that's it. If you have a mistake, I don't mention it.
Okay. Does council have any questions on this violation?
What kind of safeguards do you have in place?
You have to sign that if I can look at the... And... And definitely that... And... And second, it has definitely... And...
So each employee goes through a training program?
Maybe out of them, one or two, definitely that is... Didn't go through.
Any further questions from council? Okay, do I have a motion from council finding that Tobacco &amp; More, located at 420 South Main Street, violated the City of Statesboro Alcohol Ordinance on December 3rd, 2014?
No movement.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? As this is a first violation, council may consider a one-day suspension of the offender's alcohol license or warning as stipulated by the ordinance. Do I have a motion from council as it regards punishment for the violation?
For the defense, value should be a warning.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, appreciate the warning, thank you very much. Okay, we'll move to violation four. Can I have a representative from Fast and Easy, please, we want a representative.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I'm Scott Brandon, I represent my Brook Hill Art, as in the Fast and Easy store at 118 Leon Drive in Statesboro, Georgia. At this time, we have appeared under the Civil Administrative Hearing Standards to stipulate that there has been a violation of the City Ordinance 6-86, sale of alcohol to minors on December 3rd, 2014. As this is the second offense within 12 months, we understand that it will allow for a suspension up to three days. It may be up to three days. We would ask that the council consider releasing short of three days. However, if it is imposed, that it be immediate to start tomorrow, the next day, and the next day. We have some mitigation of this offense, we would point out that the person that made this error was the second day on his job at the time. All employees are required to sign a form agreeing to not sell to minors and to follow protocols. They are trained, they have a training program at Fast and Easy to prevent sale of underage persons. And as a condition of their employment, they must abide by that training and those rules. There is also a computer that constantly displays to the register operator the current legal drinking age date of work. So as they check the licenses, they have the date of birth that must be met there. So we would offer that consent and stipulation, and ask for as much as we can, may that council make the balance.
Okay. Does council have any questions at this time? Mr. Brandon?
His second day on the job, this is the last day on the job? Yes. Counsel, very close. He was a non-traditional employee, actually from another place, from the United States, and skilled in the civil engineering business, and was simply filling in to help, and perhaps the training didn't quite stick in what it would through normal Fast and Easy employees. And I understand that there have been several checks that were done, and compliance with the law in the city code was hard to do. So it's not like there have been prescribed violations. I think there were three or four checks to make sure that compliance and they were positive results.
In the last six months, I've been approximately four or five checks at that location, and two were consistent violations.
I guess my concern would be that, we were just up here two months ago, on November 6th or 4th, I think, with the same issue, so all I can say is, they need to be a lot more careful. So, do I have a motion from council finding that Fast and Easy, located at 118 Leon Drive, violated the City of Statesboro Alcohol Ordinance on December 3rd, 2014?
No movement.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? As this is a second violation, within the last 12 months, council may consider a three-day suspension, at maximum three-day suspension, the offender's alcohol license or separate warning as stipulated by the ordinance. So do I have a motion from council as it regards punishment for the violation?
Well, I think the second one, if you have three days, we're gonna consider the three-day suspension to start as soon as possible. I have no reason to say if you have to prolong, it'll start as soon as tomorrow, and continue on with the...
So, well, at midnight tonight is what you're saying, council members, let's get clear.
Be back.
Okay, so that will go through 7th, 8th, midnight, midnight of the night, okay?
Right.
That's a motion by council, Lewis, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, and our home case, and my favorite, name is the Sparkers, just hear from Sparkers. Okay, please state your name for the record and who you are representing today.
I'm Adam Patel, from Sparkers.
Okay, you have been duly sworn, yes or no? Do we have a written agreement?
Yes, ma'am, it was signed by Ms. Patel, and I'll send them.
Okay.
And she does wish to speak to suspension dates, if possible.
Yeah, we'll talk about that as we get on to do it. Ms. Patel, did you sign this paper that I'm holding in my hand stipulating that the entity you represent did indeed violate the City of Statesboro Alcohol Ordinance?
Yes.
Okay. Does count, would you like, do you have anything that you would like to say to council at this time regarding this violation?
Yeah, can it be a suspension, can it be like on Friday, I mean Saturday, Sunday, and Monday? Can it be sent to you, suspended?
I think council has heard your wishes, and that they're both able to decide that. Okay. Does counsel have any questions for Ms. Patel, as well?
I send you a safeguard in place.
What, what do you plan to do so that we don't see you again anytime soon?
Me trying to guess to like remind every day, like take ID and I have signed posted on the, like next to the register with the birthday. Which is okay, which is okay to sell alcohol in Tobacco.
Okay, anything else you'd do besides a sign?
We got a cash register, remind you every time you sell alcohol to the customer.
Okay, is, uh, the employee was charged, Lieutenant Brian, is that employee still with you?
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions from counsel? All right, do I have a motion from counsel finding that Sparkers located at seven nine nine Northside Drive West of Statesboro violated the City of Statesboro alcohol ordinance on December third, two thousand and fourteen?
No move.
As this is a second violation, counsel may consider up to a three-day suspension of the offender's alcohol license or a warning as stipulated by the ordinance. Do I have a motion from counsel as it regards punishment for the violation?
Well, quite a clarification, Mayor, we need to, uh, we need a vote.
Oh, we didn't vote on the motion?
We have a motion to vote.
Whether violated, okay, sorry. Appreciate you pointing that out. Do I have a motion from counsel finding that Sparkers located at seven nine nine Northside Drive West violated the City of Statesboro alcohol ordinance on December third, two thousand and fourteen, and I'll be quiet.
Yes, no move.
Do I have a second? Any discussion?
Is this the same employee? Is it the same employee who's eaten?
That's the same employee that violated the first time?
Yes, ma'am.
And they've been, this will be their second time in court?
The, the setting of events has been, um, it's been a pipeline, and I'm not a hundred percent sure. If the first case was supposed to, um, take the license, it was, it was set in the first month, and that was a different year.
Okay.
Quick question, uh, Lieutenant, um, what exactly are they charged with? Indeed, I mean, is it misdemeanor?
It's, uh, misdemeanor offense of sale of alcohol to a person under commitment.
And what's the standard punishment for a first-time offender?
It is a fine and probation. I don't know the exact term, probation is really far, maybe I'll speak to that.
Simply fine and probation, we're looking, I think, off to the talent, see, meet the system for first Michael to say, see, it's a fine, which is, uh,
Well, this would be a second violation. Which is significantly more, is that correct? They would be on probation at that time.
So, I'll leave you dealt with the second sale violation.
And, and, uh, Mayor, counsel, just let you know, Department of Public Safety has put forward some recommendations, um, as far as offenses, fines, et cetera, punishments, or alcohol violations, very much, it seems, it's, um, difficult also cover enhanced penalties for certain offenses.
Okay. Any other discussion from counsel? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, as this is a, or second violation, counsel may consider a three-day suspension, up to a three-day suspension of the offender's alcohol license or a warning as stipulated by the ordinance. Do I have a motion from counsel as it regards punishment for the violation?
Move for a three-day suspension and grant her Saturday, Sunday and Monday for her, one day.
Do I have a second to counsel Lewis's motion?
Uh, counsel Lewis, I respectfully disagree with you on that, uh, it would treat one, one way.
Well, we're not saying that.
Immediately imposing that, I think we'd do the same, uh.
Okay, I can go on with the sound, seem like she wants to take her busiest days, like you said, on Sunday and Monday. But the other guy said, start tonight and just Tuesday and Thursday, so, you know, I mean, I could, I could see if she asked for the same thing, but she asked for Saturday, Sunday and Monday. You say on Saturday, Sunday, I'm familiar with the location, they do, so I, they, I finish all on Saturday, Sunday and Monday, but, you know, whatever, it's, it's, yeah.
So, uh, most of your alcohol sales are on the weekend? And you're, um, you're wanting to take your, uh, alcohol suspension on the weekend?
On Saturdays, because we, I wasn't sure if they guys deliver on that day or not, but because of maybe they don't deliver, if we do a suspension, then we gotta wait until next week to get our delivery, I don't, I'm not sure with that either, you know?
And we're just, we're just prohibiting the sale, not the purchase, by use, and that's not.
They won't grow up if you don't have your license.
They won't grow up. The thing that makes me uncomfortable is that we get into this pick the days you get suspended situation, and that's. What do you think about that, Mr. Lewis?
Do you recall the, the days from previous two, three-day suspensions? Were they immediate?
No, actually, it was immediate, uh, at the.
But, I mean, as far as treating people equally, being, like counsel Lewis said, you gave the first person what you asked for.
Mm-hmm.
And you give the second person what they asked for, you're just giving them different things between, uh, Saturday and Monday. You started the Friday.
So, are you gonna say in that case, then you can pick your three days within a week?
That's up to counsel, counsel can consider whether to do that, we don't have to. Do it this way, it'll start at Friday at midnight, continue for seven to eight hours. Or you could do it, it is up to the discretion of counsel how to propose the sentence. Either way, there you go.
Okay. So, I'll go back, do I have a motion from counsel as it regards punishment for the violation? Do you want to restate your motion, counsel Lewis?
Well, I still think it's private, so I say, if she wants that.
I will, uh, I'll, I'll second that, um, as long as, uh, as, as long as the, um, suspension is taken care of within the week.
Okay, no problem, I have a problem with that, Saturday, Sunday and Monday, I'll stick with that.
So it starts Friday? Saturday morning at twelve oh one AM, through Monday at midnight, okay? We all have the same face with that, Saturday, Sunday, Monday. Okay, we have a second, do I have any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Next, we'll move to then to item seven, which is public hearing consideration of a motion to approve a second reading, reading of ordinance two zero one five dash oh two. An ord- an ordinance amending chapter eighty-two utilities of the Statesboro Code of Ordinances of Stabilizing Stormwater Utilities. This is a public hearing, can I have a motion to open this public hearing, please, from counsel?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So I'll ask Robert Cheshire to lead us in this public hearing, please.
Thank you, Mayor, um, y'all remember, if you recall at the last meeting, we went into depth as to why we feel like we need, uh, a comprehensive stormwater management program and also on a recommendation on how to fund it. So the next steps brought us to today, which is a public hearing. If, after the public hearing, you'll have the opportunity to consider the adoption of the actual ordinance, which, the utility ordinance, which is in the package, and you'll also have, uh, an opportunity to consider a resolution on how much the fee would be, which will recommend at three dollars and ninety-five cents per ERU equivalent, uh, unit. If, if both are passed, then the next process would be to go into a more formal education process and meeting with those individuals. And we'd like to state between the first and, between the last meeting and today, uh, we did meet with, uh, one property owner, which is a, uh, owner and a manager of a multifamily properties, and a lot of properties in town, and their biggest concern had been the way that it was gonna be built. And, uh, we, we had some really good dialogue, I saw a little gentleman here that we met with, and, um, really had some good thoughts on that and where they were coming from, and that's what I would envision. The way that the ordinance is written, it's, it gives us a lot of latitude and flexibility on the way that it's actually billed. And by that, I mean, it may go to the property owner, it may go to the unit, there's still dialogue that needs to occur on that, but that wouldn't prevent you from considering the ordinance. Did want you to know that we've had those discussions, it came out of it very positive, we had some good ideas there, and I thought, um, you know, some things that we hadn't thought of. And so we, we wanna be able to make this, um, as amenable as it can be, uh, considering what, what it is. In addition, we had several, y'all had some questions at the last meeting, and we, we went back and wrote something up and sent some responses to each of you by email, but I'm gonna give, uh, Jason Boles an opportunity here in a second to go by each one of those individuals, go through those if you'd like to. So, um, today, again, what you'll do is we'll go into the public hearing and then after that, to get the actual consideration of the resolution, well, first the ordinance and then the resolution.
And to be clear, it's two separate steps, we adopt not only the ordinance, but then we adopt a fee schedule. Without an adopted fee schedule, the utility in and of itself doesn't actually exist, right?
That's, I guess it would exist, you just wouldn't.
So they still some, I mean, I think there is still some tweaking as far as the fee stuff.
Yep, right. I'm gonna turn it over to Jason briefly, just to go through those items that Ja had last time, and we can answer any more of those, and then turn it back over to the mayor to start the public hearing.
As Robert said, we had, um, some questions to raise in the last council meeting. So we sent out, yeah, an email with some, number from VEG and some bullet points from, from myself, and, um, I'll just go over some of those points right now. One of the first questions, um, how will staff educate the public on the mitigation and credit process? Included in that email, we want to have a public education outreach plan, will we start this month, uh, if approved? Start meeting with property owners, uh, as Robert said, um, we've already met with, with one property owner in town, and that's kind of a, um, indication of how we plan on handling this. We'll start, um, later in this month, we'll meet the apartment association, with the apartment association here in Statesboro at a regular monthly meeting, um, go over any, any points that they've got, any concerns. Start going through some, through some, um, some open house or town hall type meetings. Open the door, give the public a chance to come in and ask any questions they've got, and, um, we'll be working this through, through the next few months until, if approved, until building was taken place. The next question that was raised last month was the billing procedure for, for large properties. As Robert said, currently the ordinance will have a lot of billing flexibility, uh, we'll be looking to counsel to give us some direction on, on what they're looking to see. We've got several scenarios you could, um, ultimately, though, as orders is drafted, uh, billing responsibility is ultimately on the property owner. That's, um, should be the most viable across the state of Georgia. And, um, but we've got some flexibility there to build tenants, uh, multifamily apartments or, uh, uh, strip centers, retail centers, uh, model property. Just let the council give us a direction on, on what, what you would wanna see in regards to that. The third question that was asked was encouragement of landlords to mitigate and receive credits. Of course, we'll go back to a public education outreach program on the credit manual, we've got cleared in, in the packs for this council meeting, and in that email was our, uh, our drafted stormwater utility user fee credit manual. That's, uh, it's a working document, um, it's not necessarily a document that's only intended to be approved, it's a, it's more of a policy type of document, so it's dynamic, uh, we can update it and address it at any time. Always looking for input from the public or counsel on that. In addition, we'll be looking at developing some stormwater, or advising some of our stormwater regulations that we've got, and we're looking now currently our, um, drainage control ordinance that we've got in place, pass the provisions for that, we'll go back and revisit that depending on the outcome of this process. And then we'll be looking at adding additional spell requirements that may be necessary. Fourth question that was asked last council meeting, tenants credits. I believe, uh, Courtney with EPG spoke to that at the last council meeting, but, um, essentially in the credit manual, we've got some flexibility there for, for tenants to, um, or the public in general to be able to participate in the process, to help with, um, with some, uh, some watershed management, you know, processes. So we've got a lot of flexibility there for, for participation by, uh, by tenants, by residents, by citizens, uh, participating in that and receiving some credits. Fifth question that was raised, where can we get our current stormwater expenses? Based on what we can apportion out of our, out of our, our budgets, um, right now, approximately three hundred fifty thousand dollars a year, so that goes, we work on administrative oversight, personnel that actually do the work in the field, the equipment maintenance, equipment purchasing. Final question that we'll ask, let's generally read this. We visit this every time, and counsel, and we'll be looking at this, just like we do all of our other policies, procedures, ordinances, to make sure that, that we're delivering the services that citizens expect. And the most economic rate that.
Do we have any questions for Jason before I ask if I'd like to come speak for or against in this public hearing? Yes, would you like to speak for or against?
Yes, I would.
Please come forward. Can you please tell us, uh, station name?
I'm Todd Backatage.
Hey, Todd.
My mayor, I'm Rick James, I'm a citizen of the state.
Nice to see you.
As well, I am, for Kevin. Um, we both attend Eastern Macbeth Church, and we have a huge parking lot, a huge roof line. I know we as a church don't pay property tax, this becomes a property tax incentive, a use tax, and, um, I just, um, haven't heard anybody speak of, you know, churches, I, I haven't read of churches being included in this. Can you tell us about that?
I'm sure. See, while we have not heard much of what's going on, but.
Sure, um, utility, uh, store utility is just that, it's a utility, so it's not a, it's not a property tax, um, not looking at any military increases with that. So basically, it's, it's dependent on, um, your, um, your overall impervious square footage, uh, would treat, it would treat all properties, uh, just the same, whether it's a government property, city, county, state, or education, church, private development, uh, where the amount of impervious area that you've got, uh, and as we proposed it today, it's three ninety, three dollars ninety-five cent per, um, for ERU, which is equivalent residential unit.
Which is thirty-six hundred square feet?
Thirty-two hundred square feet. So for every thirty-two hundred square feet of impervious area that you got on your property, then you would be billed at three dollars and ninety-five cents as proposed. And it just, like I said, it would depend on the amount of impervious area you've got. There are some, in the credit manual, there are some, uh, available credits, and we would work through, reaching out to, to churches and apartment associations, um. We've already met with some of the governmental entities to, to, to get them, um, educated on, on what we're talking about here, and, um.
Give, give a couple of ideas of what, what would generate a credit, Jason, I think folks, it's not necessarily having to do something physical with the property. Although that's in there as well, but.
Yes, ma'am. Um, there are, there are some, some credits available for, like, a low-impact parcel, so if you've got less than thirty-two hundred square, square feet of impervious, um, you get some credits up to twenty-five percent, uh, on that. Watership, stewardship, as I mentioned earlier, like tenants, residents can do, um, there's up to a percentage requirement on that, it's like a, a percentage reduction on that. Currently it's at five percent, that's dynamic, we can change that as, as counsel sees fit. You get a credit for, uh, existing detention ponds, uh, which I believe, uh, PGI was existing detention pond, so there should be some credit available for that. Rain gardens, um, cisterns, barrels.
Is there a percentage for, for detention pond currently?
There is. And I, it's.
Is it five percent or a hundred percent or what?
There isn't a hundred percent, and most you can mitigate is fifty percent. Fifty, half, yes.
It's thirty for the one, it's fifty for, um.
Yeah, thirty to fifty.
Yeah, it's pretty thirty and fifty percent.
And we would work hand in hand with, with the property owners to help, to help guide everybody. And we would work hand in hand with, with the property owners to help, to help guide everybody through that process.
Have they already assessed the properties at point where they are recognizing an estimated amount of income from the fee?
Um, no, sir, not, not citywide.
They don't have any idea how much will be coming in?
Well, I take that back, um...
Yes, you're the generator.
Courtney, do you mind standing?
Sure.
Come outside and introduce yourself and explain.
My name is Courtney Gray. I'm with the local community group. I'm assisting the city with the setup of this stormwater utility. And, uh, yes, if, uh, the city council elects to charge a rate of three dollars ninety-five cents per ERU, uh, citywide, it will generate approximately a million dollars of utility revenue. And I would equate it similar to, does your church pay a, a fee for trash to be picked up? Or a fee for water and sewer service? It would be a similar system. It's a utility, uh, you're paying for services rendered by the city for the stormwater service.
That's part of, that's not, um, fee for services, I understand. This is not fee for service, um, in my view. This is a act that is listed as fee for service in order to apply to, um, non-bought organizations.
Well, it is viewed by the state of Georgia as a fee for service. It's been, uh, ratified by the Supreme Court of Georgia as a fee for service, uh, simply because, uh, there's an infrastructure system underground, stormwater pipes, things, there is water and sewer pipes, and you pay for the services the city provides to allow stormwater to drain from your site. Uh, it has been approved by the Supreme Court as a fee. Uh, and because you are able to reduce your fee, if you do certain things with your property or with your, um, with your congregation, to reduce the impact that your property has on the state's drainage system, you can reduce your fee. And to talk a little bit more about some of these fee credits, certainly there'll be opportunities for you to come in and talk with the city, and they'll help you find the credits that are appropriate for you. The watershed stewardship, if your congregation is feeling the strength enough, you can receive, uh, credit for that. If you wanted to, um, you have a detention pond, so we talked about anywhere between thirty and fifty percent, depending on how big of, uh, detention pond or what type of capacity it has, um, you can receive those credits. Um, certainly there's other credits in here, not pollary preservation. Uh, if you wanted to do rain gardens or rain barrels on your property, you could get additional credits for that. So there are ways for you to reduce your fee. Same as if you had a water conservation program in place, you'd be able to reduce your water fee, um, or your water service, um, costs. Either, um, I can say if you have other questions, we'll discuss them.
Uh, I have other questions, but they don't necessarily require my truth. The creation of another utility. Uh, we have an identified amount of space in State Department, we have identified problems, we have some of those over the years. So have we identified the projects necessary to alleviate the problems we have? As we had, what July last year, and your election, we had the flood and the parking lot, all that flood and everything.
Yeah, we, actually we have. And I guess, Jason, would you like to speak to that or Robert? We've looked at different areas that will need to be affected with, or spend for capital infrastructure for that.
Yeah, we've actually, uh, we've done a real good assessment with EPG's assist, assistance, and they've identified fifty-three projects to be done. Uh, but included in those projects are some large regional detention facilities, which we like to do, which would in turn maybe reduce some of those fifty-three. But until we have those studies done and have the, the funding to even have those studies done, a large regional detention facility would be just that. It would be, um, like a low-lying area that we could go in and buy the property itself, and then the city would manage that from a water quality and a water quantity standpoint, versus having a bunch of little ones at each commercial entity. So we have identified those, and they're upwards of four million dollars worth of projects right now.
In regards to that, does that give this utility the right to eminent domain?
Well, the city has that anyway.
But then for this purpose, it could be...
You say eminent domain for the purposes of just deciding we wanna put a pond there, therefore that's where we put it?
Well, the, I, I would say, if I could jump in here, part of the reason the money is, the, part of what the money is going to is to be to purchase property and not just to take it, you know what I'm saying? Not that the eminent domain, you don't end up paying somebody for their property anyway. Uh, but we do need to purchase pieces of land to, to keep building off of, so they keep flooding. We gotta put the floodwater somewhere, and the more we build, the, the more floodwater we create. And, uh, I mean, you guys, you know, you guys got a big parking lot? There's a lot of big parking lots in town. All that water goes somewhere, and, and we need to buy some property, and we need to create some spaces to contain that water, so we don't flood the Wendy's parking lot and various houses and apartment complexes and things like that. It's something that's been neglected by the city for a long time, and, and so we're playing catch-up within the large degree from previous administrations.
I guess that my last question comes this year. If we've identified the project necessary to alleviate problems, and we've definitely got plans, and we've dealt with all the problems, is there an end in sight for the utility? Uh, we know that once things are enacted, uh, a lot of sales taxes and putting things in place, they have a tendency to make themselves go on, I don't know. They have an idea to the end of the process, I'm asking.
I understand that, and I kind of, you know, I think about that every time I go over to St. Simon's, where you don't have to pay the toll anymore 'cause they paid for the bridge. Um, but, and I just wanna differentiate quickly between the local auction sales tax, you know, those are, are approved by the voters. So, yeah, they do, at times have a propensity to go forward if the voters feel like there's something there that needs to be done with it, and this is approved at council level. So I just wanna differentiate that. Um, but, you know, it's, it, we're in an interesting time. And the city of Statesboro, and I think, you know, as I go around the state, people, there seems to be a general consensus that with the deepening of the port down Savannah, that we're going to grow a lot, or have the opportunity to grow. We're gonna have the opportunity to grow with, uh, industrial sites and those kinds of things. And I think that if you're like the folks down in the Richmond Hill area, they're having explosive growth. Right now with their industrial park, and with industrial park comes jobs, with jobs comes people, with people comes more houses, with more houses and rooftops comes more commercial, and it just perpetuates itself. So to sit up here and tell you that, we're not, if, if we were to sit here and say we wouldn't have any more growth, we'd bill no more commercial, we'd bill not, we wouldn't have, require any more infrastructure, just repairing what we have, yeah, you could probably say that there would be an end in sight. But to sit here and say that we're not gonna have that growth, and we're not gonna need that infrastructure, and, you know, the citizens of Statesboro are gonna be happy with things status quo, with nothing else continuing, I would be, I think we're missing in that. So I, I wish I could tell you, yes, and I would like to hope. Yeah, I mean, I'm just being completely straightforward with you. I would like to hope that we could collect over four or five years and repair it and, uh, get things where they need to be. Um, but, you know, I, I don't wanna make a promise I can't keep. I think one, one interesting story I heard with the city of Dunnwood Incorporated several years ago, what they didn't take into account, we probably know this, was the thirty-four million dollars in stormwater repair they had to do. So we're not at that point, and if we, obviously, but if we can get to doing what we need to do so that we don't have the flooding issues, you know, maybe we will be able to, and, and I'll just say one other thing real quickly. That three ninety-five number, three dollars and ninety-five cents, was put in place to be able to, um, legitimately take care of what we need to take care of. So we don't come back and say, oh, by the way, we were wrong. It needs to be five fifteen, or it needs to be whatever. We wanna be responsible in that, but that doesn't mean that a few years down the road, we can't say it doesn't need to be but two fifty. We're taking care of our needs, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a fluctuating number, just like the mileage rate that can, can rise and fall as it needs to be.
Robert, how often is the fee schedule adopted, yearly?
Yes.
So it'd be like the water fees?
So we'll be looking at that. I mean, we're very sensitive. We have one of the lowest mileage rates in the state, so we're very sensitive to that. But in having a low mileage rate, there's nothing left over to take care of stuff like this either, so.
But it is month-to-date, I think, correct?
Yes, it is.
And...
And it will be collected in arrears. In other words, you won't get it at the beginning of the month, it will come at the end of the month, so.
And knowing that we just went through a electoral process, and this has been a study that's been ongoing, how come we didn't have it as an opportunity to let all the citizens, you know, run the city on that ticket?
'Cause it functions like a utility, so it's definitely, and that's how the, the state of Georgia has recognized it to be the way that it should be put for. But you have, we have elections every other year, son. You'll get a chance to go back.
What, what do you want to do for?
This has actually been in the works before.
Perhaps you have some alternative ideas of how we're supposed to, uh, repair ditches and, and pipes and, you know, you don't just build it and it stays a ditch for, you know, leaves get in there, and dirt gets in there, and things collapse and they have to be repaired, so you don't just install them and it's good forever, so how do we, how do we maintain it?
And I apologize. I, I've owned this here for twelve years, and, uh, so I don't see everything that happens in this district.
We're, we're open to suggestion. We, we don't wanna raise it, raise it any more than that.
But I asked my wife the day, and I asked a few other people, when was there a time that we've driven through Statesboro and something was impassable, or we saw a neighborhood flooded? Now, I must have identified something I haven't seen.
We've had, actually, pretty substantial flooding in the last couple of years.
Has the community flooded?
Mm-hmm, yes, sir.
Council drew out...
My neighborhood, uh, Woodlong. My neighbors, uh, had, sitting there, ten-year-old girls in a canoe down the road, across the road.
Into, into the homes, or, or...
Uh, it did go in, into the home, but it was, it was, that was not the city's fault. It was the way they built their, uh, their house.
So, uh...
Um, but, but I feel for you. I live on high land. This is not gonna affect me, but it's gonna affect you.
And part of this, if I'm not mistaken, is going to be EBD regulations coming down from the state. The state is mandating that we maintain the water quality that runs out of our city, yeah?
Well, let it just be said, I'm in full disagreement with the whole thing. That's, uh, obviously.
Sounds like we've only had three people speak against it, some large property owner, and myself, and I think I'll be there.
Early, early on in the discussion, uh, Jason and Robert will tell you, just about everything, you know, said I, I fought with them all for about thirty days. I mean, you know, first, first thing, and it took a lot of going and looking and seeing someone's house that, you know, clearly the way the road was designed, the way the ditch was undersized, the culverts were undersized. I didn't realize it at all, and I've been here, I've been on council for twelve years, so I didn't realize it. And then immediately when the utility came up, I said, it's taxed, it's taxed, taxed, and everyone gave it up. I said the same thing. And it's taken me a lot, and I, I am a, I'm not a big fan of property taxes at all. I love to rush to the runoff and go to everything they use or take. Um, no, except for the fact you can't let, can't let them do that. Um, so I really looked along at that, some of the concerns you guys had. I hated the fact that we had to, uh, make it something that's gonna seem like that because of how you're using it. But even though, like John said, you're on high ground, everywhere, if you look down the map, when it's high ground and you're taking up the space, that water's gotta go somewhere. And even though it may not affect your first at all, you may not have lowland areas, and the repairs may not actually affect that lot of land that day. But it affects that plot of land's impact since it's been developed, it's no longer a weapon. Um, my house is a good, I, 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 my water runs nice, it's all fine. But the water that runs off my property goes somewhere in a way that we're being told. The other thing that I looked at immediately from a dollar standpoint, uh, so you guys were asking, one of the priorities that I had in this stormwater utility, and staff's aware of it, is that we fix the areas that are currently costing our taxpayers money due to flood insurance. Um, and we, there are several areas in town that redid the math, the hundred-year flood map. Jason, I'm talking about at length. Those areas, because of the undersized culvert, the, the lack of any funding we can do, you, the citizens are paying more money 'cause they live literally one foot on the other side of the, of the line, that Wayne Martin could explain that to me. So in time, I do hope the utility will get where we are balancing back now, so. I, I'm good. I'm, I'm, I'm right there with you. The reason, and the other thing is, will it go away? I don't, I'm not sure it'll ever completely go away, but our goal is for that three ninety-five to continue to move down.
So do I understand GSU's involved in this as well?
Yeah, they will be assessed.
And, and... Probably a four hundred thousand dollar fee immediately.
No, it's not that much at all.
Well, they have mitigation, again, they have the way to mitigate it.
We've talked all, I mean, we've got, the, the bottom line is, we've got a situation that we've got to take care of, and we've gotta take care of it as fairly as we possibly can.
The very, the first two people that were spoken to at length about it were the, uh, I would say the, Representative Brooks Gill and Representative Charles Paul Woods. They were very aware, you know, kind of exactly what this was. The consultant made sure of that, so did the staff.
Okay, so all city, county buildings, landscape, uh, parking lots, grid lines, all of them get the same, same tax? Not, not portion of or percentage of?
Well, we don't tax ourselves, but yes, the county, the VOE are all...
The homeowners are the same rate, the homeowners are...
There's an equivalent, that's what the ERU is. They take thirty-five hundred square feet, that's, that's the, that's one. You know what I mean? So if you got seven thousand square feet, if you got two, you pay twice. If you've got fourteen thousand square feet, you pay four times, right? That's how that works, so...
Well, I've been through this in Ethingham. I used to reside in Ethingham. And had had these issues, I left Ethingham, just so you know, that's how I feel about it. And I apologize for the stormwater, but it's, that's why I'm here. Uh, it's, you know, I think it's far-reaching, you know, it's definitely, you gotta find some extra money to take care of culvert here or culvert there. You know, let's create a whole utility to do it, tax the entire community for it. I don't agree with it.
Okay, well, I appreciate you coming forward today. I don't have anything else.
Please keep in mind that, uh, um, city, city staff will work with you in any way to tell you how you can abate your, uh, your fee. You know, we wanna, we wanna stop it. We, we don't wanna charge you. We wanna, we wanna stop the water problem. So please allow us to help you.
Okay, do I have anybody else? Yes? Now, go ahead, that's fine. Does anybody else have, would like to speak for or against? Please come forward. Say your name, Mr. Parker.
Thank you, counsel. Uh, my name's Wesley Parker. I'm a citizen of Statesboro, and I'm also on the Statesboro Tree Board. And I brought with me, uh, Mr. Henry Clay. He's our chairman. He's also in favor of this ordinance, as I am, and Lisa Lee. And she's gonna come and speak to the environmental benefits that the city should approve from, of this program. I came to speak about the fairness and the necessity of it. And I think we all here recognize we have flooding problems in Statesboro. We've all driven through, we've all seen Wendy's parking lot under, underwater, and we've all seen the residents by the CBS standing out waiting for the Red Cross to come to them. But the question is, how do we pay for it? How do we do it fairly? Currently, these projects are funded by taking money out of the general funds, which means we're taking money from street repairs to sidewalk projects. We've all driven around Statesboro. We know we need to fix some of the commos and we need to get our roads in, in shape, 'cause that, A, it's a bad ride, and B, we need to present our city for economic development, and our city needs to look good. All right, not everybody has a stormwater flooding problem. So if you don't have a problem, you probably don't think we need this, but we all contribute to the problem. And I think, you know, I'm a perfect example. I live on top of the hill on Savannah Avenue, but all my water goes behind my house, and it goes to Gordon Street, which is probably the worst flooding part of the whole city of Statesboro. Uh, those people have to put boards from their street to their ports, to get into their ports, maybe. Um, so we all don't contribute, we don't all have a flooding problem, but we all contribute to it. So this, this ordinance has it. All property owners pay, and that's why I think it's the fairest way to do it. So even though we all don't experience flooding problems, we can all be part of the solution. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parker.
Well, Leslie's gonna speak.
Good morning. Good morning. I'm Lisa Lee. I'm a professor of biology and the director of the Center for Sustainability at Georgia Southern. And I'm also a, a member of the tree board, the one with Wes. I'd like to speak today in support of, uh, the new stormwater, the establishment of a stormwater utility. Um, as Statesboro becomes more and more developed, we have more and more impervious surfaces, roofs, parking lots, roads, et cetera, and there's no place for the water to go. Um, flooding, we see a lot of flooding during these heavy rain events, uh, and the water from the flooding does not actually ever get treated. It goes straight back into our stream system, and that means that we're also having a decrease in water quality in the area in, um, in, in our watershed. So the, uh, establishment of a stormwater utility would provide funds for improved stormwater management. In other cities, they deal with some of these things, um, installing green roofs to absorb some of the, uh, the water, and the water goes through the vegetation, uh, that are, that's growing on the roofs. In addition, other cities have, um, put in bio soils, which are vegetation in, in ditch areas, essentially to help to absorb that water and keep it out of the stormwater system. So this is a use of natural vegetation to soak up the water and, uh, keep it out of the stormwater system. And the, the establishment of this utility would allow for, uh, for Statesboro to do the same. Uh, this, uh, other cities are using pervious surfaces, uh, pervious pavers in parking lots and so forth to allow for infiltration, uh, into the ground. Uh, and again, this also takes, um, takes care of some of that stormwater before it gets into, uh, our stormwater system. Trees also help to improve, to improve, um, stormwater management, and, uh, the funds would also go towards trees. Um, so the stormwater fee would allow for credits for the use of pervious surfaces for mitigation, and would actually encourage our property owners to adopt sustainable storm... and would actually encourage our property owners to adopt sustainable stormwater methods. This is a really important thing for Statesboro to handle its stormwater, not only to reduce flooding, but also to improve the water quality that's ending up in our, in our stream systems. Um, so, as a city, we need to implement the solution to the flooding and water quality problem, and this ordinance would allow for that to happen. So, thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any one else that would like to speak during, during this public hearing phase? Mr. Johnson?
Absolutely. One, Johnson, Director of Water and Wastewater. Just to kind of update you, right now, we're all concerned about existing flooding and existing problems we have in the dream. This is coming from the State Environmental Protection Division, Department of Natural Resources. Uh, the Georgia Association of Water Professionals has, is it, has created a stormwater division within it as well as water and wastewater. The Environmental Protection Division, in conjunction with the State Ordinance Administration, is in the process of writing and training and certification requirements for stormwater operators. Uh, in the near future, you know, the next one to three years, we envision that cities our size are gonna have to have certified stormwater operators the same way we have to have certified water and wastewater operators. We've known for, what, over fifteen years that eventually we're gonna have to contain and treat the stormwater that leaves Statesboro before it enters the stream. It's one reason we have retained ownership of Bird's Pond, which collects about two-thirds of the storm drainage from Statesboro. We, years ago, spent the money to redo that spillway so that in the future, we can put the necessary treatment and streams in. So, this is something that's ongoing, is gonna get more and more critical as we continue to grow. Thank you.
Let me ask you something, Mr. Johnson. When do you think that regulate, when do you think that will directly affect us, that we will need to be treating that stormwater? Do y'all have any sense of that?
Robert, you know, we're in the court.
Yeah, they actually, uh, every, every decade, when the census comes out, is when they reestablish what they call the Phase One and the Phase Two cities. And, uh, we actually thought we were gonna be in this last one, but we weren't. So, in the next.
In the next census, we're probably gonna.
So, twenty twenty?
Yes.
We will be looking at that in five years, basically.
You're gonna be looking at it, multi-million dollar treatment, that you're gonna have in capital expense at both Bird's Pond. You're gonna have to acquire, uh, facilities on, uh, Lots Creek, uh, not Lots Creek.
Mill Creek.
Mill Creek, which is the other major drainage basin we have, where you'll have to detain and treat that. You'll have to have certified operators, uh, migratory testing, just like we do at the wastewater treatment plant. So, it's coming.
And when, when you're talking about treating the water or something along those lines, you're, you're talking about removing the impurities such as petroleum products that run off as a result of.
Trash that's thrown on the side of the road.
Roads, arc lines, driveways, that type of stuff.
A good, a good visual is if you'll drive down that, that Parkway, that sixty-seven hang it left, when you pass Wellco's, look off to the right, and you'll see all the trash and debris that's coming from Statesboro that's getting caught there in that wetlands now. Now, eventually, that gets to Bird's Pond, but it's coming. And so, just, I think you're moving in the right direction to be ahead of the game and have a funding source in place, because in the next ten years, you're gonna have major, major capital expenses, not just on the infrastructure, but on retaining and treating the stormwater that reaches there.
Do we have anybody else that would like to speak today?
Uh, I'd like to ask Jason a question. Um, uh, we don't have this in place right now. How much, um, uh, time is the, uh, Public Works Department spending on this that, that they should be spending in other places?
Hmm, that's a good question. Um, I, I look for the figures in here. I, I solve it up. Uh, we, we should raise about a million dollars in the first year.
Your current fund is at three fifty, right?
Approximately.
And three fifty was gonna, uh, go back into the general fund, and the rest was going to, uh, fund a dedicated crew.
And then cap one calls. That's right.
Cap one.
Okay.
Yeah, we're, we're not spending anywhere near the amount of, I mean, judge that by the, uh, amount of complaints that we get from the public, particularly every time it rains. I mean, we, we just, we can't afford to be as proactive as we need to be. There's just, there's only so many people and so many, so many resources to go around. And we're probably, I think we're twenty-five to fifty percent of our time when, when it's not raining and when it is raining, we have to drop what we're doing and focus on that, and then we go back to what we were doing before. We're basically just in a reactive stage right now, more than we are proactive.
Mr. Aldrich.
Yes, I'm a resident of the city. I live in an area that does have potential flooding problems, and I.
You get our, you get my runoff?
Yeah, I get everybody else's runoff. But actually, I've been there for fifteen years, and I agree with Councilman, uh, uh, Brett in that, uh, I appreciate our little property taxes, so I do pay for your fee. If I cause a problem, I'm a part of it. I like to be part of the solution. And I agree with, uh, Councilman Boynton, too, is that over fifteen years, that our area is the ditch that collects everything, and is probably eroded over ten, twelve feet the last two, three years, but that has increased as development has increased. So, um, I appreciate the council taking the lead and doing something now before our neighborhood floods, and then come back and say, "Well, maybe we should've done something a lot back." But it is, it is a growing problem, so to pretend like nothing's gonna happen in the next three to five years, I think is short-sighted on the community's part. So, I appreciate y'all taking the lead.
No, I'll tell you, if you, if you live anywhere near where the, the big ditch that goes out to the treatment plant, that runs behind the old Winn-Dixie, that runs behind Statesboro Crossing, that everybody loves to go to, you can see, this definitely changed that area. We have water issues there. We have, everything's draining down that way. It's affected the neighborhoods back that way. Everybody loves Statesboro Crossing, but it has had a tremendous effect on that area and the land that's behind there, so. The runoff. Do we have anybody else that would like to speak? Okay. Do I have a motion for council to close this public hearing?
Motion closed. Thank you.
Do I have any discussion? Okay, our public hearing. Uh, all in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, our public hearing on this is closed, so do I have a motion to approve Ordinance two zero one five dash zero two, which is an ordinance amending Chapter eighty-two of utilities of the Statesboro Code of Ordinance as establishing a stormwater utility?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Um, do we need to simply say, uh, the, um, the monthly fee?
That's gonna be in, that's not a date.
Approved separate.
I apologize.
Okay. Do I have any discussion? Any further discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item eight is a public hearing consideration of a motion to approve or deny Resolution two zero one five dash oh two, which is to approve the user fee, which is one to ask Council, raise for the stormwater utility. I'll start by asking for a motion to open a public hearing to talk about the user fee.
So, move it.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, we're in the public hearing phase as it regards to user fee. I will again defer to City Manager Cheshire to lead that discussion, begin that discussion.
Um, as we mentioned at the last one, then, uh, mentioned it a little bit today, we've gone through a pretty extensive assessment of where we stand, uh, with our infrastructure now and where we think we need to be. And we've come up with over, um, and these have been on the books for a long time when it comes to our S P L O S projects, but if you look at our S P L O S projects, we only get, uh, in two thousand and seven S P L O S, we got around six hundred thousand dollars a year for roads and drainage. And in the two thousand and thirteen, we get a little under a million a year, if, if we collect everything, so six million over six years. That's for roads and drainage. And just to give you an example, we spent every penny of it in resurfacing last year. So, there's your roads. We didn't spend, we spent very little of it in drainage. We can only do that so often.
It's about a, we figured it out. It's a, right around a hundred thousand dollars a mile to re, just to repay it. There's no, that's not repaired.
That's a basic two-lane road. So, it can go into a Gentilly or go into like a Tillman Street with five lanes last year. It eats up to it, into it pretty quick. So, the money's just not there to do what we need to do. And we've talked about quantity and, and quality, and, and the quality issues are coming. I mean, and they're there, they're there now. That's what you spoke to, you know, we've got those issues out there now, so we, we need to be more proactive. So, um, we started out, when we were looking at what the, what we thought the cost needed to be, it came up with four dollars and twenty-five cents. And, um, we went back and council challenged us to look at it some more and, and, um, really look at some, some values and see it, look at some of the projects. And as we did that and looked at some of the projects, we thought we might be able to defer or might be able to do some of the larger detention facilities, which we really want to do, because we think we're gonna get the most bang for buck for those. Um, we went back and, and came up with a three dollar ninety-five cent, so we did reduce it some. It would be our recommendation, staff recommendation, to stick with three dollars and ninety-five cents, but just to do less than that, we don't feel like we're gonna roll out a product. People are, we, we need to go out there, we need to clean these ditches and clean these inlets and, and get out there and be very visible. And if we don't, if we're not able to hire that additional crew and purchase the equipment, then we're really just putting a Band-Aid on it. I think we're gonna make more people angry than we are gonna be happy. If we're able to get the funding we really need, then we can go out there and possibly get a bond and do a larger detention facility, get the crews and go out there and be, just like the water sewer and gas utility, we're out there being proactive. You have to realize, this isn't just the new stuff. We've got, we've got pipes in the ground that are fifty, sixty, seventy years old, and this is a matter of time before it collapses under a road, and then we're out there with a major road closed, trying to figure out what we're gonna do and where the flooding's gonna come from, which right now is not there. So, I think we're fooling ourselves to, that if we don't go out there and, and get a lot more proactive, and Wayne will tell you that from a water sewer. He's got, you know, sewer lines that, that are not in the shape that he liked, but at least he's got a funding mechanism to get in and, and get him on, get him on the chart and go to him and note that three or four years from now, he's gonna get to those. Right now, we're just, we're just rolling the dice. Uh, so, we're not putting the kind of dollars that we need to them. It's not coming from S P L O S, and it's not coming from the general fund. So, this is the most equitable way that we, that we've come up with. There's over fifty stormwater utilities in the state of Georgia now, uh, and there's a lot across the country, and they, they determined that it's, uh, it's the most equitable way so that the, the Georgia Southerns and the Board of Education and the capital counties and everybody participates in, in, in something that's, that's all of our issue. So, we're recommending the three dollar ninety-five cent per E R U, which is three hundred square feet in pervious area.
No, let me ask you this, Robert, um, or maybe Courtney. That is something that we would approve, and something that we would need to approve every year and renew. So, if we felt like that rate needed to move one way or the other, it would be voted on again this time next year. Is that correct?
Absolutely.
Okay, so it, it is something that would need to be renewed every year?
Hey, it's an opportunity for the council to evaluate the program, to determine if you're generating enough revenues if you want to do, to determine if you're having, and you have a good one here, if you find that you don't, that, that you have more revenue than you need, you can reduce the fee. If you decide that you want additional project, projects to be included, uh, it might affect the fee. It really gives an opportunity every year to determine and to evaluate your program.
Okay.
And it can be reset. Not only reset, but you can look at a five and ten-year planning horizon for that fee, but it can be evaluated every year.
Okay. I wasn't sure exactly how, I remember how we set that up.
Yes, I know. I think Robert's, um, especially the staff is in that we're gonna look at having this be included on the schedule of fees for, for all of the, um, I'm cranky for my own, Robert, but it'd be part of the schedule of fees issue, all of the fees that the city's charging for all of our services, our utilities. And, um, and at that point in time, any, any one of those could be adjusted as necessary.
Right. Because basically, the rate will stay the same until you vote on it each year, decide whether you want it to be different or not. I don't know that we voted on every rate every year, but it's, it's my recommendation that we have a chart of rates and that we readopt those every year.
We, we readopt the water rates, though. Do we, do we readopt the water rates every year?
Only if we check.
Oh, and?
The, the way the ordinance reads is your utility rates are as set in the schedule of fees and charges as may be amended from time to time by the council. So, the only way any utility fee is raised or lower is for it to come for this body with a recommendation to either increase or decrease the schedule of fees and charges.
Right. Wayne, will this free up any resources for you?
No, but probably it's not gonna come under me.
So, I don't know if the rates not change, you know, whereas we go through the budget process every year, you have that opportunity to say, hey, we wanna look at changing that rate. So, it would be one of them that we highlight on that schedule of fees and rates, but it won't necessarily change. Um, you don't have to adopt it every year.
It's a separate fund, just like the firefighter fund, just like the water fund, just like that?
And there will be an enterprise fund.
An enterprise fund, Steve.
And that's such a thought every year, that you will have to use regarding how many ways utilized and any of them.
I mean, it will function like a separate fund with management. It will be all the, it will, it will function exactly like the other enterprise funds function.
Jason, we've figured out the issue with multifamily situations, considering the property owner's the one that owns the buildings and the concrete and the detention bond, but it's the tenant who's paying the water bill. So, how are, how are we charging the property owner and not the tenant? Have we worked that out yet?
Our intent at this point is to bill the utility bills, which are going to the tenants. Uh, but ultimately, as the, in the ordinance, I would prove, uh, property owners ultimately, uh, responsible for the charge. But we're gonna work through that process, uh, meeting the department association and department owners, to make sure that's comfortable process for them, as best you can.
I think one of the things that, and, um, Brian Davis talked about when we chit-chat about it was, uh, most of the apartments, the larger complexes here, not all, are all-inclusive, so that, the utility will go to the owner at that point. I think Brian said there was, what, three that aren't all-inclusive that are part of the association?
Yeah, but I, I was also thinking, you, you've got plenty of individual condos and houses that are rented out that, uh, that's gonna go to the renter, not the, not the owner. And, you know, these apartment complexes could just stop being all-inclusive. I mean, they, they're all separate metered, aren't they?
Most of them.
Yeah, I mean, all the new ones are, right?
All the new ones.
So, I mean, all they have to do is say, "We're no longer all-inclusive," and boom, now that three dollar a month goes on the tenant for the four dollars.
Yes, sir.
Uh, uh, I'm gonna speak again. I apologize, uh, for being an obstinate person, but to speak on fees one more time, uh, have, have any of you stopped at Walmart or a grocery store, and the lady in front of you kept to pay for everything on the conveyor belt, an elderly lady? Have any of you had that happen? Did you choose to put the money out there and make sure she was taken care of? Because I've done that. Uh, I think you need to consider there are people in this community that are on fixed incomes. You think sixty dollars a year might not be much, and it might not be much. But, so some of the people in this community, it might mean something to them. So, uh, you know, if there's a, a credit you can give for elderly, I would consider it. I appreciate that. Lucky that you agree with her. Uh, also, I would still ask that churches who, uh, people are tithing in good faith, that they wanna see their money used for faith-based, uh, things like missions, uh, things at the church, ministries at the church, that you consider a separate credit opportunity for churches. That's, that's, it's not why people come to church in time, to pay some, you know, made-up fee, you know, you know. But, uh, you know, I, I would appreciate it if you would consider people on fixed income, the elderly, that you appreciate, uh, that you consider, uh, you know, a, a separate church credit, uh, 'cause they have huge parking lots and huge fruit lots. So, you know, you've got huge amounts of money that are a part of it. Uh, but that's something, that's something to consider. Okay?
Thank you. Thank you very much. Will any of us like to come up and speak? Yes, ma'am. Yeah, absolutely.
I wasn't written down, but.
No, no, it's quite all right.
My name is Christian. And when I came here, I didn't like the idea of having a taxidermy. Since I've heard what you've said, I do support, I do think, yeah. Uh, all I wanted to say was that where I live, before they allowed grass to grow over where the water comes through, there was some flooding, but since they have allowed the grass to cover it up and it's totally blocked, now we have ponding by Lanier. I live at two twenty-three in the air crossing subway. There's major ponding at the, at the edge of Lanier, and also in the middle of where you turn in on the asphalt. It's like, it's going down, it's like it's caving in, and you'll have the same kind of ponding there, and before. like it's caving in. And you'll have the same kind of ponding there. And before that to the place, we didn't have the problem. That's all I wanted to say. And I do support you.
Tell me, just so we can make note, where exactly is that in the South?
It's two twenty-three Lanier. Um, you've got us staying in place and Freedom's landing in the state.
Okay.
You're not too far from the bypass, right there, Robert?
Um, little. You've got me.
Close the little.
And I have an apartment, too, right by the street. You've got my apartment, La Quinta, and the bypass. That's what it says.
Okay. I mean, I think you, you point out a good example why we've got to find the means to take care of things like that.
Yes, ma'am. And I'm not big on more taxation at all. To, I was not real crazy about the idea. But since I've heard what y'all have said and why, why it needs to be done, I agree. So.
Thank you so much for stepping forward. I appreciate that. Would anybody else like to say anything before we close our public hearing today? Okay. Do I have a motion for council to close the public hearing?
To move.
Yes, ma'am. Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now do I have a consideration of a motion to approve or deny resolution two zero one five dash oh two, which is the resolution to approve the user fee of three ninety-five for ERU for the storeware utility?
Mayor, before we get to that, um, Jason, what would be, how, how, how difficult would it be to, to make modifications to this and bring it back next time? It's like, for example, I know that was one thing I, I had thought about before was a low income and I didn't see a, um, a category for that in the list of, what do they call it, the list of?
Credits.
Credits, sorry.
Yeah, credit annual can be modified in secondary. You don't have to vote on credit annuals. You can modify it.
So we can look at, uh, we can look at the low income, we can look at the churches, we can look at several things.
Wait a minute.
Just pondering.
When you say administratively, though, that means you could, that means administratively you could remove credits and thereby increase the fee to somebody. So I don't, I, I, that should still have to come before council, yes, to change the credit manual?
I'd like to, uh, uh, that'd be the kind of step we would want to bring.
You know, you know what I mean? I mean, if you just, Robert gets crazy one day and says, no more education credit, you know, and all of a sudden, uh, Georgia Southern fights as much as last.
No, I agree with you. I think we would want to tweak that in front of the elderly.
I guess my point, I'm sorry, my point is that you don't have to change the ordinance to do that.
No, no, that's, uh, yeah, I understand that. That's, and that was the distinction I made before about the, we're creating the utility and then there's a set of fees. And that the fees is, I think, what most people are, I think, most people are concerned with utility. I think they're concerned more with how much they're getting charged.
I think that would constitute a change of fees and charges, which requires council action.
Courtney, are there other places that give a credit for senior citizens or something along those lines that you know of?
I don't know of a storeware credit for that, but I do know of other user, uh, other types of user fees where there are credits given for low-income or senior-type income type credit.
So we could vote on a resolution to set the, the base rate and then bring back and look at options as far as the credit, the credit portion of the policy manual would be. Would that be okay?
Yeah, because we're, we're not, um, the first bills wouldn't go out until July of twenty fifteen anyway. So we've got six months to get that straightened out, the amount, or some of the credit we might want to change.
And again, I don't, you know, I think this is going to be something that's going to be around for a while. So taking a week or two extra at the beginning to, to properly plan and assess, I think that's the way to go. Any, any problem with maybe tabling this and looking at those things for next week or two and then voting on it?
Well, I mean, you'd be tabling, you'd be tabling.
I'd rather vote on the fee now, but then, I think, I think, city manager, I agree with you. I think if we can look at it like one of those suggestive, and if you can deal, you can let nonprofits or something go to a hundred percent, you know, litigation. You can do everything you can do instead of having forty or fifty, or there's some options there. I'm not, I'm not crazy about reducing them for the sake of reducing them. But if you want to do a little something, and we'll reduce it more than we would normally, I'm okay.
Yeah.
Again, just because you are an organization, anytime, I'm not per se an equal. And the same thing would be low income. I'd still like to see low income. You need to address it.
I honestly, that's my first priority. And if you've got a giant parking lot, you're part of the, you're contributing.
Or, or if you've got, at, at your home, you know, it's clear you're not doing anything. Hey, let's do something. You need to, because I think the, the whole point of the, and this plate can say more anyways, again, we can educate the public that this is something that we can fix together. We can work on how we can take the water from our yards and put it in some places that we want, or keep it there. So that's, yeah. But I think we can, I'm okay with, with passing the fee today and then reevaluate.
Well, the fee would be, yeah, the fee would be separate discussion from the credit manual part, then.
No, the fee, the credit manual is, is the fee. That's, that's part of, is that what you just said, Wayne? I mean, modifying the credit manual is essentially modifying the fee.
No, the resolution sets the fee. And then there's a credit manual separate from the fee.
And we're not, so we're not approving the manuals all? Oh, I'm sorry.
The credit manual is actually, is mentioned in the ordinance that you just adopted.
That you have a credit.
But you can, so it's currently adopted as it states, but you can, we can bring the credit manual back to you next week for you to modify it. It's separate. You're just a, the resolution you're adopting now.
It's just simply the fee.
Setting the rate.
Not one particular rate, okay. That's at the top of the menu.
That's right. Do we want to go ahead and then see if council would like to give a motion to approve or deny resolution two zero one five dash oh two, which is a resolution to approve the user fee for the storeware utility?
I'll, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the user fee.
I'll say, I'll say.
Do we have any discussion?
I guess just before we, I guess, just, Robert, before we propose that fee, let's, let's be prepared to talk more about, you know, how that works. And let's look at that until everybody in council has had to, who's paying what and how they're paying it.
Yeah. And I would ask that we do it after the next, beyond the next council, because the next one's got a real long agenda. But we will absolutely bring it back to you before you things implemented. And so three ninety-five would be worst case. So as we're working with people and telling them what their amounts will be, that'll be a worst case scenario.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution two zero one five dash oh two passes. Agenda item nine, we're not going to address that today. The panel staff has a few adjustments to make to the plan before presenting it for approval. It is anticipated that it will be on the January twenty-one, two thousand and fifteen, the general cut. It was not ready to bring to council today.
So, so to pack it up, I've had, you know, last week, there, y'all, you're making changes to it before you re-present it in June, June of the week?
Well, no, you can't, um, once the packet, I think you're saying, Pat, the primary thing that we're looking at is going to future, my, you said, I said, in that plan, it was a hundred and two all. After having supposed instructions, the mayor, the manager, they did say, um, that I would do a few all. I felt like I needed to make adjustments to territory areas that were on that map. Uh, so if you all would just look at that and let's talk more about that. The, the company really is set of goals and objectives and policies for, for land development in your districts and the, the whole. So if there's some areas you'd like to see added or removed in your district, I'd like to hear that, if we can make those adjustments. I think you have some draft maps upstairs that we can look at.
Yeah, and that was one of the things I'll actually ask you guys to do before we come back to the twenty-first, is to come look at that, because they're big amounts, uh, specifically in your district and see if that looks like what would be okay with your district as far as doing that. Because when we were going through it, city manager and I noticed that there were some things that we just felt, well, not any in the best interest of the district and probably something that you wouldn't agree with to begin with. So we sort of parsed that out by, district said you need to come look at it.
Sure.
Which, um, which mapping question?
Is the future land use map. And in the packet that you have, there is a map from the two thousand and nine plan that you all adopted. And then there's a draft map for the twenty-fourteen update. And again, we continue to make revisions and thought of issues that will be addressed over the last few years in the city and some that we just made before. So I have even more drafts upstairs. And then.
Oh, I'll have that.
Here's your copy.
Okay. Agenda item ten is a motion to approve resolution two zero one five dash oh one, which is to fix and publish qualifying cases in City of San Juan for the November third election. Ms. Sue?
Yes, ma'am. This is our, um, resolution that will be in the process for our election that will be November the third of this year. It is for council seats, um, district two, three, and, um, and, and this is just the required resolution that's, uh, will be advertised in the name of two strong classes for the election issue.
Okay. This is something we normally do every election cycle.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Does anybody have questions for Ms. Sue regarding this? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve resolution two zero one five dash oh one?
Yeah.
Um, motion to approve resolution twenty fifteen dash oh one?
Do I have a second?
Sure.
All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes to approve resolution two zero one five dash oh one. Do I have a, um, agenda item eleven, consideration of a motion to approve resolution two zero one five dash oh three, appointing Jason Boles to the board of directors of the downtown state for development authority. Absolutely not. All right. So let's go to twelve. I'm just, I'm just seeing if y'all were awake out there. All right. Robert, can you please talk to that motion?
Yeah. Um, I may actually defer some to Alan here, but, uh, we're really trying to, in some cases, make a, a good liaison between three of the entities that the city works closely with, and that's the Convention and Vision Bureau, the VSDA, Downtown State for Development Authority, and the State for Arts Council. And, uh, we've already got, uh, Jeff Grant serves on the SCBB. And Cindy West is, uh, is serving in a, in more of a liaison position with the Arts Council, but she brings a lot of, um, information back and really worked well. Uh, but I believe y'all have an opening, if that's the way it reads, for a city appointee for the VSDA. And, um, after some thought and with Alan, I think Alan, hopefully Alan supports it. That would be to have, uh, Jason Boles on there, at, at least for this first year. Is it for a year? For, yeah, for a year. And we'll just see how that works. Um, I think it's worked well to have staff members more involved in these, because it gives just a lot of back and forth and, um, they rely on us and we rely on them a lot. And it's worked well. So this is more of a, a more formal method of doing that, so this would put Jason Boles on their board as a member of the union.
Okay.
Motion approved?
Do I have a motion to approve? Resolution two zero one five oh three, and you seconded it. Counselors, any discussion?
I, I just wanted to say, uh, thank you to Robert when he first took the interim position. Um, this was something I discussed with him, trying to get a better communication with those three entities again that work closely with the city. Um, and he came up with the idea of, of maybe putting a, um, a department head in, into each one of those, um, onto each one of those boards. And so I think it's, it's already borne fruit. Uh, the communication between those three entities amongst themselves, not just with the city, is, is vastly improved over the past six months. So, um, I, I appreciate you, your take on that. And thank you, Jason and Jeff and to Cindy for taking some extra time and, and working with those organizations. Again, it, it really has, it really has helped.
Okay, thank you. Do, um, all in favor of this motion to approve resolution two zero one five dash oh three, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Agenda item twelve, Ms. Dan Prakop, could you come forward as we discuss a consideration of a motion to award a contract for prior apartment phase three construction to CMC Construction in amount of one hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars and one hundred and fifty-seven six hundred.
Yes, ma'am. This invitation bid was, excuse me, for phase three for the prior apartment renovations. Um, phase one being, uh, the addition of phase for the fire foot and the trucks. Phase two being for living quarters. And now this will turn the existing facility into, uh, office space. Uh, first I would like to thank Ronnie Shaw for all he's done in all three phases, especially this one. He, uh, basically designed plans and very well adapted specifications. Uh, he and his crew did some of the demo, some of the framing, uh, saved Smith and I money. And this, all three phases are going to come in significantly in the budget, largely part of Ronnie's effort. So I'll get that out there. Um, we, we bid this out, uh, per code of work law. Uh, the, uh, original estimate was around one ninety if we had done it in certain of the wrong contractors. But code of work, work law doesn't allow us to break things apart, stay under a hundred thousand. Uh, the hundred thousand dollar amount kicks in the bonding, the advertising limits and other requirements. Uh, so we bid this out per that law for the whole period. Uh, we had a mandatory rebid, seven contractors attended and received three bids. Um, the lowest bid came in for prison rental construction at a hundred and fifty-seven thousand six hundred. Uh, now we would like to say that we did clearly acquire, the bid bond was required by state law. We did ask for E-verify proof and general liability. Uh, that was not submitted by CMC Construction. Um, and I did consult with, with Alan, uh, city attorney. And the recommendation on that is, uh, that we waive that technicality and recommend an award, one to prison rental construction, one fifty-seven six hundred. Uh, we have that right to waive those things. We can't waive the bonding. They had a pre-bid, uh, a bid bond in there. We could not waive that. Uh, now we'll add that CMC Construction has done several recent projects in which they've submitted E-verify and approved insurance. And they did, after the fact, email.
So we do have those things.
We do. They did, after the fact, email me those two elements. So I can have that in possession.
So we have them. It just wasn't part of the bid package?
That's correct. And, um, so our recommendation would be to award the CMC Construction one fifty-seven six hundred.
So they do have a general liability policy?
They do. They do. And they did on three of the projects. But I just wanted to upfront about that. It was not even a bid package.
And always a question when one bidder is twenty percent lower than the next guy?
If, there wasn't, you know, actually, all three bids that came in ranged one fifty-seven, I believe, two oh four from the top. And two oh four was, uh, accepted. So I mean, we're, we're very pleased with their results. Um, you know, it comes in significantly in the budget. I think we had roughly two forty-five, two fifty left in the budget for it. And there are some extra things that we might need to fill in outside of this plan here.
One reason he was low, I think, you asked, you asked him why they were so much lower. He said, you know, is the good timing for their, for their crews in the winter, for one thing.
He said, you can go under in the winter. He said they're not making an awful lot on it, but they're tied over this winter.
Better than hiring new people.
It was not a meeting, it was not a lunch.
Right.
We didn't talk about that company. Why didn't the lunch?
No. They, they, uh, and I, I, they've done several quality projects, so I haven't really been, but this one really doesn't help. So, if we're wrong.
So it sounds like to me we were allowed to follow the law and not skirt around things, go through the road process as we should have, and came out with a very good bid.
Yes, ma'am. We.
So it's our lucky day.
You know, competition's a great thing, Karen.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
But I think it's fun here, uh, many questions, everything.
And this pretty much finishes up the project, yeah?
It, it finished up.
Under budget.
Under budget.
We'd like to hear that. Motion approved?
Do we have a motion to approve the contract for phase three construction? Is that you, Councilwoman? Do you have a motion? Do I have a second?
Say it.
Oh, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Ms. Prakop. Agenda item thirteen, other business from city council. Uh, do we have any other business from city council? I know that, um, Councilman Bred had asked me about something earlier in the week, last week.
Oh, yes, ma'am. Thank you. Um, I was just pondering, see if you guys reached it and the mayor and I, well, if you guys bring it down, you guys would like for us to have a sort of a goal-setting meeting, talk, uh, sometime in the next sixty days, if we do it, either ten feet that direction or ten feet that direction from the, probably Durban Hall, where you have the building that we've used several times to the wider city hall. Uh, look at your calendars, just so we can kind of come up with some big ideas and kind of all be on the same page that way. Gary's got a project he's worked on and John knows about it. John's got a project. Phil knows about it. And we all kind of say, well, this, these are the things that we're talking to the mayor about. These are the things that we're talking about.
and we all kind of say, well, these are the things that we're talking to the mayor about, these are the things that we're talking about, we're about. And just going forward, especially with the email, the budget coming up, some things we're going to see after July. Uh, we used to do, we used to have an events, or we did some things, and they were called different names. And so instead of doing, you know, sort of names involving, what we used to go do, is just call it a meeting next door to set a goal for the year.
I think.
And we'll invite Alan.
It, it would be, just to be clear, this is a public meeting.
Oh, absolutely.
That would be advertised, and would function as a work session. Thank you.
I just thought the idea that we did that next door over here, just kind of removes us from being up top, a little less of the tie and lunch, and go from there. Really, you could probably make it work, lunch. You guys are for it, you know, on there's some dates?
Well, I think we can ask Ms. Sue, y'all can send some dates that'll work for you to Ms. Sue, and see if she can coordinate that, and maybe we can firm something up at the next council meeting.
And can you also mention about that?
Yeah, I'll still do that.
Well, the only, the only thing I would recommend too on that is just reach out to, obviously, the other players down, towards the Department of Education, yeah, change, that kind of thing. And, uh, invite them, or at least make them aware of the event and schedule that time, or representatives from those organizations could then.
The only other thing that I had, which Ms. Sue just kindly reminded me of, was we talked about trying to have an alcohol ordinance work session at night, because all the ones that we had held prior to this have been in the morning meeting and wanted to make sure that folks had an opportunity to have their input that could not be here during the day. Um, and we're going to try to do it this month. I don't know that, I, I, I guess, towards that last weekend, January maybe, Alan? After the, the, uh, council meeting? That would give us enough time?
Council relation will be on the twenty-first, it's the twenty-first day after the next council meeting.
On the twenty-first? So the following week, that Wednesday would be like the twenty-eighth?
Wednesday would probably be the best bet for me, given the next court schedule, and I feel we have hearings, we never have to come up next.
And I have been asked to remind people that Wednesday is church night.
So we want to look at that Tuesday? Thursday? I don't know. Or do we want to wait and try to set a date at the next council meeting? For sometime in February, the first week or so in February?
The, the next meeting is long?
But I'm just trying to set.
Is there a lot of items, or is there a lot of discussion items?
Both. I'm going outside.
And we have a work session before that, where we're going to be discussing personnel and budget rates and fees.
Y'all want to shoot for setting something that's, that meeting? We can go ahead and try to get, maybe, Ms. Sue, you can reach out to everybody individually, and see if there's a date that works, and maybe we'll bring up a couple of dates on the twenty-first for the first week in, um, February or so, if that work. Does that work, your, for you, Alan, with your court schedule?
I'll check the court schedule for February and see if that works.
Okay, let's do that. Maybe we'll coordinate it back that way.
And Phil and I were just talking, someone had brought up, I forget exactly, about moving our regularly scheduled meetings back to five, or to five thirty, back about there. Is that, I, I don't remember whether.
I don't have a problem with that, would we have to write a resolution for that?
Captain, it's actually in the ordinance.
It went to six, so that we could keep staff here, so like, I know it went to six, because staff were here for an hour, and so the idea was to go to five fifteen, and now they were here, and some people were at five fifteen. It's not enough time for folks on another job to get here by the six o'clock, is that?
I mean, five thirty-five, isn't it?
There are some state laws and state grant clauses in there, and I can't remember where exactly, but they have to do with using the power, we don't like to mention it here, but you gotta have a meeting that starts after six P.M. You've got some, some state laws require a council to authorize certain things to occur at six P.M. or whatever. To make sure, the idea in state law.
That doesn't mean we have to start, it just means we have to open the public hearing after six, that kind of?
That sort of thing, so, I mean, there's been a couple of times I've wondered whether we're gonna have to start this meeting at five fifteen, or we're gonna have halls play in the public hearing, so.
Do you want to, to look into that and make a recommendation to us for, for the resolution that, that the next city council?
Sure.
Okay.
It'll be at five thirty, maybe, you know, you just have to wait.
Okay.
Well, I mean, most of them are gonna last half an hour, anything like that, that's gotta go after six, it's probably in January.
Okay.
But five thirty would be great.
Any further business from council? Alan, how do you think?
Just reiterate again what I said a minute ago, but, um, that is, there will be a work session at four o'clock at the next council meeting. So prior to the next council meeting, be it four, and it'll be discussing, Jeff Grant's gonna go over the personnel policy changes, which we've been vetting through those for months now. Uh, but he'll have that ready and go over just the high points and things with you. And then primarily, I want to talk about the budget, which is going to be fees and rates proposed for twenty sixteen and staffing recommendations. So this will give us some direction from y'all, so that as we go back and get into full bore into the operations of the CIP budgets, we'll be, uh, we'll have some information, and also we won't have to do it two or three times. That's all I got.
Okay, Ms. Sue, do we have any public comments? Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Certainly.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any adjournments?